Welcome, everyone, this evening to the September 8th City Council meeting. Welcome to council, being back from break and ready to go here. Thank you all for showing up. The first thing we have this evening are ceremonial matters. And first up is a recognition of Officer Aaron Johns. Tonight, we are honored to have Officer Aaron Johns in attendance so that we can publicly thank him for his service and response to an armed subject on a traffic stop who became a deadly threat to the officer and children and adults in and around Churchill High School last November. Officer Johns was recently awarded three different Medals of Valor. He received Eugene Police Department's highest honor, the Medal of Valor, in May. In July, Officer Johns attended the Conference of National Association of School Resource Officers, an organization of officers who work in schools and advocate for school resource officers and school safety, where he received a Medal of Valor. In August, Officer Johns received a Medal of Valor at the Oregon School Resource Officer Association Conference. What Officer Johns did is extraordinary. On November 20th, 2013, Officer Aaron Johns, a 15-year veteran of the Eugene Police Department, stopped a vehicle near a fire station directly adjacent to Winston Churchill High School. During the stop, the officer presented a direct threat to Officer... During the stop, the rider presented a direct threat to Officer Johns, and he patted the man down, removing a large knife and hatchet from him. The rider then ran from the office to the south side of the school, where he presented a direct threat to the students and staff at the school. Despite a rapidly changing, highly-charged situation, Officer Johns ensured that all schools in the area were placed on lockdown by airing a request on his radio. Seconds later, he faced a lethal threat to his own life as a suspect pulled a concealed handgun. Officer Johns valiantly fought to control the weapon during an intense struggle of survival and prevailed, ending the threat to him, the students, and the staff at Churchill High School and bystanders. Officer Johns' display of extraordinary bravery and heroism in the line of duty and extreme life-threatening personal risk to himself went above and beyond the call of duty. He ensured the safety of the young people there, the staff, and other community members in the area of the school while facing down a known and imminent danger. The brave act he performed displayed an extreme amount of courage and strength. And we are here today to say we are grateful for the opportunity to thank him tonight on behalf of the entire community. Please.
More pictures? All right. All right. The same time? This is great.
So, the second commemoration this evening, this is a very good evening, is a proclamation. Whereas the cities of Eugene and Springfield began the process of merging fire departments in 2007 with the creation of the Third Battalion Integrated Response System, which responded to emergencies by dispatching the closest units without regard to jurisdiction. And whereas in 2010, the departments entered a functional consolidation phase in which administrative and support functions, as well as the department's training sections and fire marshal's offices, were consolidated to allow for greater efficiency and substantial financial savings. Whereas, on August 4th, 2014, the final step in the merger process was achieved with a full integration of the Eugene-Springfield Fire Department Emergency Responder Workforce. And whereas cooperation between the department's management and IAFF leaders and members have been important and integral to the merger process and its completion. And whereas a merger initiative has built a stronger and more capable fire service organization, improving service delivery and reducing costs to the public significantly. Whereas Eugene-Springfield Fire Department merger promotes leadership and collaboration, strengthens ties between the two cities, and enhances the safety and quality of life for the citizens of both of these communities. Now, therefore, I, Kitty Piercy, Mayor of the City of Eugene, Oregon, do hereby proclaim September 8th, 2014 to be Eugene-Springfield Fire Day and encourage all citizens of our communities to celebrate the integration and improvement of the Eugene and Springfield Fire Department's mission and resources for the common good. Let's give them a big hand. Before Chief begins to make the presentation, I just want to say he's very modest. And he really should take a lot of, a full round of applause, and as should the rest of you, for all the hard work you've put in and all the sacrifices that you've made to really make this happen. We have our deep thanks. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, with me tonight is my good friend and colleague, retired Springfield Fire Chief Dennis Murphy, who began this journey with us. Also with me tonight are Deputy Chief Randy DeWitt, Deputy Chief Joe Zaludic, who is on loan to lead the Information Services Division for a period of time, his interim Deputy Chief Matt Ennis, Brian Evanoff, who is our Administrative Services Bureau Manager, and IAFF Local 851 Union President Mike Barnaby. Prior to this initiative beginning, we had numerous philosophical discussions of the efficacy of bringing our two organizations together. These discussions started long before I began with the Fire Department, back in 1980. Although these discussions happened numerous times, it was never the right time to move forward. In 2006, Chief Murphy and I met and started talking about trying to move forward with a real change with our talented teams. And as the mayor pointed out in the proclamation, we did this in steps as we moved forward. It was a long process. It was a methodical process. At times, it was a tenuous process, but we kept moving forward, never losing our sight on the prize. And that's providing a better service delivery system to our public and saving what's now annualized $1.6 million a year. And so, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished. It's been a true collaborative effort. It's been a team effort. There's nothing that's accomplished in the Fire Department by individuals. It's always a team. And that's been the case here. And with that, I would like to turn this over to retired Chief Murphy for a few comments.
Welcome, Chief Murphy.
Well, Mayor Piercy, council members, when I retired in July of 2010, I put full faith and confidence in my friend and colleague, Fire Chief Randy Groves. Even then, the work was only half-done. The vigorous effort of merging our two departments was only half-done, but I knew he and his capable staff of employees from both departments would succeed with support from council and mayor from both cities. This evening, I celebrate the completion of that task and officially retire the uniform of the Fire Chief of the City of Springfield, Fire and Life Safety. I have confidence I will be the last chief since the founding of the department in 1886 to wear this uniform. And that's my statement of confidence in this merger for the long term. Chief Groves will be the first of a long line of Eugene-Springfield Fire Chiefs to proudly wear the new uniform. Congratulations on this milestone accomplishment. Thank you.
Chief Murphy, let us thank you very much for your contributions.
And now, mayor and council and city manager, we would like to make presentations to you to thank you for your vision, along with ours, in helping us to realize what we start out to accomplish. With that, we're going to be handing you a presentation that we've made for each one of you. But before that's done, I want to read what is inside the framed document with our new patch. "After years of hard work, commitment, and steady progress, the cities of Eugene and Springfield proudly announced the successful merging of our two fire departments and present the new Eugene-Springfield Fire Department Patch. The patch, developed by an internal team of department members, serves as a symbol of our two cities coming together to share an essential service. We sought to build a stronger, more capable fire service organization, and through the merging of the Eugene and Springfield Fire Departments, we have successfully improved our service delivery system while effectively reducing our costs to the public. Thank you for your support."
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for being here. All right. Next up is a public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I officially open this. And we have 24 people signed up. First up is Bob Cassidy, followed by Carl Eisenbach.
Bob Cassidy, 1401 East, 27th. I understand that many of the reasons that have been given to have a more current look at the plans for the new city hall. I'm also aware that many of the points that had been raised have been refuted by staff, and those points are also disputed. One of the comments that I have heard on occasion is that, "We have been discussing this matter for 15 years. It's time to move on and do this plan." I feel that's the silliest and most useless comment that any counselor could make at this time. Yes, you and we have been discussing the city hall issue for many years, but for many other reasons. Take, for instance, that new city hall would have to have police in the building. The council insisted on it in the past. It would... It wound up meaning that the cost of the new city hall would be $120 or $130 million, and that blew all that talking. The citizens were not listened to at that time. Now is a different time for many reasons. The county has not finished their plans for the future. Then there's the matter of, is this really the center of town that we think the building should be in? A lot of things are happening on the north side of the river. Or is this really the great street that we were always talking about, leading one way all the way to the Wow House? Really, is that the street we want our city hall on? Really, it's hard to get to or get across the river from 8th Street. Pause a moment and ask for a public hearing like we did with the Envision Eugene. Dialogue with the citizens for future planning.
That is Carl Eisenbach, followed by John Brown.
Carl Eisenbach, 2415 Skyline Boulevard, Eugene. I'm in Allen's Alinkas Ward. Besides world peace, what I really, really, really want is for the city to allow temporary homeless camping in the winter. Why do we need this? Well, you know, first of all, we're going to save some lives. Second of all, we're going to save the state some money. Third of all, we're going to have better police surveillance as far as the problems that the homeless create. And if you do, I will do everything in my power to calm down some of the barking dogs that have been nipping at your heels. The thing is, is that time is running out. We're getting close to the equinox. Cold weather is coming on. This is going to be a real life-and-death situation. And what me and everybody I know is asking for the city is to just be a little bit flexible and act as quickly as you possibly can on this matter.
John Brown is next, followed by Valerie Morris.
Mayor Piercy, members of the council, thank you. John Brown, Ward 5. First, I'd like to thank you all for your service to our community. Although we always don't agree with you, we agree with you enough to live here and stay here, so thank you very much for that. This evening, I'm going to talk about a common thing. I've come here for over 15 years talking about this. I've lived in this community over 64 years. It's about the rivers, and it's about their condition. And you knew I was going to say it, and I'm going to be back in two months again. Right now, the condition of our riparian areas is worse than it's ever been. And I've been cleaning them up for a long time. I've been paying my own money. I've been hiring people to do it and things. And, you know, I know that sometimes you say, "It's not ours. It's not our ownership." But the fields that you assess people, if we don't mow our grass and it gets too long, you mow it and you assess it. You can do this. I mean, an example, I had one in Springfield. I cleaned up some camps. It cost me $700 of my own money. ODOT did one right next to our... It cost them $11,000. And we have a little different criteria about hazmat and cleaning things up, and I know it's the hazardous thing to do. I'm not asking for anybody to roust anybody. We never have, we never will. But when the floods come, and they will, the majority of these camps are within 30 feet of the water. And they'll be washed into the river, and it'll be out of sight, out of mind, and here we go again. So I think there's a solution to the problem. You can evaluate them, you can assess them, and I don't care if you don't own it. You own about 80% of the riparian area from I-5 to Belt Line. And it's yours, and we have money to deal with it. And it's very challenging for me to look at the criteria that you place on developers and saying, "We need to clean the stormwater. We need to treat it." I'm all for that, 100% for that. And I know there's people watching this right now that are cringing about me saying that, but it's tough. But to do that and then to let this other degradation of the water occur doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense at all. So if you could do something to go out and evaluate it, look at it, and give the property owners proper notice, and if they don't clean it up, just like the tall grass in the spring, you clean it up and send them a bill. But to sit there and let it go into the river, and there's hundreds of thousands of people that drink that water down there, it's irreparable, the damage is done, and we can't do it. So please, please, do something about it. I'll be back again in November, and I'll let you know how you did. Thank you very much.
Valerie Morris is next, followed by Sue Sierra-Lupi.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm proud to live... Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Valerie Morris. I live in Eugene, in Betty's Ward. Yeah, and I love it. I'm proud to live in Eugene, actually, and I want to thank the city for its efforts to help keep Eugene green. You may be aware of the People's Climate March happening in New York City on September 21st, right before the United Nations Climate Summit. We're here tonight to ask for the city's support for some events to be held here in Eugene in support of the People's Climate March in New York City. Among the many groups participating in the People's Climate March is AVOS, a worldwide online community of more than 38 million people who believe in the AVOS mission to close the gap between the world we have and the world most people everywhere want. AVOS's influence on the world stage has been dramatic and has led to a 15-minute presentation slot at the UN Climate Summit. AVOS will present photos taken at thousands of signature gathering events around the world with the goal of achieving a global commitment towards a 100% clean energy future. We demand this of our leaders and of ourselves. At 4:00 PM on the 21st of September, we're gathering at Cosmic Pizza, where we'll have opportunities to sign the AVOS online petition, listen to some words of wisdom, and raise our voices in song, get some really great group photos to transmit to the UN, or to AVOS for presentation at the UN. And we're here tonight to ask for your endorsement of our cause and your presence at our event. We would like Mayor Piercy, or all, or any of you, to join us at Cosmic Pizza to talk about all the great things Eugene has already done and plans to do in the future. We're not alone here in Eugene. My AVOS co-organizer and I have teamed up with the great people from 350.org and the Climate Convergence Group to plan a series of events on September 21st, starting at 1:00 out here in the Free Speech Plaza, followed by a march to the university. There'll be some more, some information sessions to be held at the university. And then we'll go on to Cosmic Pizza for the no-host celebration of songs, speeches, photo opportunities, and petition signing to be presented at the UN. We're asking you to please stand with us on September 21st and help raise our collective voices to demand and commit to a 100% clean energy future. The earth belongs to all of us. We hold all responsibility. Thank you.
Sue Sierra-Lupi is next, followed by Tracy Jocelyn.
My name is Sue Sierra-Lupi. I'm lucky to live in Councilmember Brown's Ward. I also serve as the clinic manager for Occupy Medical. The clinic is showing up for the winter at this time. We offer a very successful demo clinic in Florence with the help of St. Vincent de Paul last month. The citizens of Florence are interested in having us return and help them set up a duplicate clinic. They, like the other areas of Lane County, are struggling to find enough health providers for an increasingly underserved patient population. Last Sunday was probably our last calm clinic before our upcoming busy season. We served 47 patients within a range of 18 months... Super cute. ...and 75 years. We also feed, thanks to our community donations, between 100 and 150 people every week, all within a four-hour clinic day. The work that our volunteers do every week is nothing less than awe-inspiring. I welcome each of you to come down to our clinic for a tour any given Sunday. Occupy Medical is best witnessed in motion. Our concerns for the winter are numerous. Our county is still vulnerable to the dangers of pertussis, H1N1, and other respiratory illnesses. We are now concerned about a new virus which is creeping its way through the Midwest towards Oregon, enterovirus EV-D68. D68 is an intestinal virus which manifests in the respiratory system. This makes it very easy to spread. It hits children and those with conditions like asthma the hardest. Those of you that have enjoyed the air quality this week are reminded how fragile Oregon's air quality is. We need to protect our citizens, but I fear we do not have enough providers in this county to treat those in need. Speaking personally, as a private citizen, I do not feel comfortable with offering treatment to our patients and then sending them back into situations that worsen or cause the problems in the first place. This is why Occupy Medical works so hard to build alliances with other service organizations that can meet the needs of the vulnerable populations we serve. I am grateful for your support of Occupy Medical. I cannot thank you enough for the new public bathrooms and our little hand-washing station. Hand-washing for 20 seconds with soap and water is one of the ways you can stem the spread of viruses such as D68. As a private citizen, I am personally asking you to open another rest stop before winter strikes us again and to stop the criminalization of homelessness by lifting the camping ban. These changes will make our service to Occupy Medical easier, and it will make our community a healthier place to live in. Thank you.
Tracy Jocelyn is next, followed by Kathy Feeley-Evans.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Jocelyn. I've lived in Eugene 30 years.
That sounds really weird.
Thank you all for your service to our community. I am here tonight to encourage the city manager, council, mayor, and the entire county to keep working together towards solutions for the lack of affordable housing and the criminalization of people who are without a house in our human rights city. Every day, there are tickets given to unhoused people for while not hurting anybody or just living their lives. Winter is coming. Whoville helped so many people get through winter last year and helped open the rest stops, Safe Spot, and Vet Camp. Opportunity Village is home to 30 people. Last week, on the front of the Oregonian, was an article of the mayor of Portland has enthusiastically gotten on board with homeless advocates and a manufacturer of a model of microhouse and put out a call for all available land on city, county, state, school district, ODOT, parks, and private land to situate microhouses. Right to Dream 2 continues their overnight 12-hour sleeping program, approved for 120 people to sleep every night and every day. In Texas, after years, last week, they began building their villages for people with dignity. In Utah, they implemented a Housing First program and bought up units and converted them into homes. The program is working. Let's open our hearts and minds to the possibility of treating our fellow humans with more dignity and respect and enjoying the outcomes. Let us root for Portland, remember Utah, be happy for Texas, and keep trying until the opportunities in Eugene allow homeless to build communities and help each other survive and thrive. That is an empowerment. How is this winter going to work out? It is up to us. Let's get serious about human rights for the homeless and the underhoused. Thank you.
Kathy Feeley-Evans is next, followed by Eric Hall.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Kathy Feeley-Evans, and I live in Whitaker. I'm here tonight to express my frustrations...
Can you speak right into the microphone? It's not picking you up.
Closer?
Much closer.
Much closer. I'm here tonight to express my frustrations as a resident of Whitaker. I'm frustrated that our needs are not being properly represented within the city of Eugene. This frustration comes from the Whitaker being the first place that anything that's noisy, messy, or cumbersome is stuffed. You need a bridge across the river and a big freeway? Put it in Whitaker. You need a place for a really great big helicopter that flies 24/7? Put it in Whitaker. You need someplace to house and service the entire homeless population of Lane County? Put it in Whitaker. I'm an IMX supporter, but the residents along 13th and 11th don't want it, so put it through Whitaker. I'm going to be very engaged when you try to put it out Coburg Road. Are you going to route that through Whitaker as well for the IMX? Anytime there's a fringe group of any kind that wants to do something, they're appointed at Whitaker with no thought to the impact of our residents. I purchased my house 26 years ago on a low-income loan sponsored by the State of Oregon. At the time, I believe my house was referred to as looking like a bomb shelter. I've put a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of effort into that house. It's my home, and I plan to be there for a long time. But what's going on in Whitaker is not supporting us as residents of this community. We are doing our part for the community as Whitaker. I estimate that at least 40... I estimate that at least 40% of Whittaker houses something for the community good. It includes parks, city or school facilities, train tracks, and social service agencies. No other portion of the Lane County community or the city of Eugene does this. We need your support as a community instead of a commodity. Thank you.
Eric Hall is next, followed by Otto Fatisha.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Eric Hall, and my architectural office is located at 116 Highway 99. And Claire Sorette, you're my council representative. I'm here tonight in the company of fellow architects, engineers, fiscal hawks, and just plain concerned citizens that are all asking you to pause to consider your decision to destroy our current city hall. We'll be talking on a variety of topics, but here are a few points that I think will resonate with you. One, there seems to be much discounting of previous budgetary work that has been done on this project. Further, without any objective facts or rebuttal, we have all been told that the numbers of just a few years ago don't mean anything. Please find enclosed in some binders that we prepared a letter from an esteemed construction company that provided budgets for both architects, architectural solutions, that you had architects prepare for your consideration. Those numbers were developed by the same estimating team serving both architects, so how can they be no good in one case and good enough to make a decision from in the other? Two, while there is much history about this building that is presented in a gift that Otto will be presenting, you will note that if this building is torn down, there will be nothing in the history books at this time to point to record who voted for its demolition. And I appreciate the fact that we're going to have some more discussion about that. While that seems wrong to me, I understand from the state's Historic Preservation Office that no other city in Oregon has as fine a track record as Eugene does in destroying its architectural history. We are number one. Perhaps that will change too. Three, while you are in general agreement on your Phase 1 building, the whole notion of a Phase 2 building is missing from the conversation. If you tear down this building to construct the Phase 1 building, there will be no nest for the departments that have flocked to other parts of Eugene. And that leaves the daunting future task of raising many, many millions of dollars while at the same time continuing to pay rent to those that house those city functions. And four, there is considerable doubt that you can build a new Phase 1 and eventual Phase 2 building for anywhere near what you could refurbish the existing city hall building for. We believe that you'll be spending in excess of $17 million or more under the proposed approach. You simply have too much usable structure and parking already in place to simply reduce it to rubble as part of your recycling effort. Remember, the most cost-effective form of recycling is reuse. In closing, we're a diverse group. There are two things that we do all have in common. One—
Thank you.
—we're here tonight.
Otto Fatisha is next, followed by David Mendelblatt.
What I'd like to give to the manager to give to you is something for your coffee table. It is the documentation of the existing building, including the newspaper articles, the competition, all the pieces. So I'd hope you to just enjoy it. It's not to do any lobbying. My name is Otto Fatisha, 1820 Kona Street, Eugene, Oregon. Mr. Zelenka is my council member. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter again. I think we all want the same thing. I want a new and consolidated city hall and a recognized seat for city government. I want an icon for the community, one that is distinct and represent Northwest art and Northwest architecture. I want the most economical and obtainable special civic and urban solution. I want a solution that is energy-efficient, recycled, and represents the latest technology in architecture. As an awarded expert and experienced design architect and educator, I can easily state that all of these goals are attainable in the rebuilding of the existing city hall. I can also testify that contemporary architecture has the ability to transcend and adapt to these principles. This building can easily adjust since basically it is a structure with some applied makeup which can easily be modified for the times, the current technology, and current needs. At the council work session July 7, 2012, followed by a council motion, the council supported the rebuilding of the existing structure and retained architects, construction managers with that intent. Now council supports raising the existing structure and structured parking for a new building. I've been told that the justification of this change is a new building and a rebuilt building will be the same costs. This is hearsay, and no documentation to support that claim has been made. The parallel to 2012 studies to build new or rebuild outlined what was possible with some not available funds. These costs were well documented and included in the packet that you're going to get of the materials. Turner Construction made very complete and detailed estimates for both approaches. September 3, which I think was last week, Turner reviewed and reaffirmed and updated their estimate and restated its accuracy. I can document that the best and biggest bang for the buck and the approach that has the capability to achieve the second phase is in the rebuild strategy. Staff and council have not presented their strategy or means to finance or realize the second—fine, thank you.
Thank you. David Mendelblatt is next, followed by Ray Wiley.
My name is David Mendelblatt. I live at 996 Lincoln Street in George Brown's District, George's Ward. I was a member of the City Hall Advisory Committee. I attended all of the committee's meetings. As it turned out, I was a member of a committee whose charge was uncertain at best, kept no minutes, whose work might not even have been moved forward, let alone considered on its own merits. First, I want to point out a couple of errors in a letter to the newspaper Saturday. The advisory committee actually never voted on anything, and there were only nine people, nine members of the committee at the final meeting, so there was no 8 to 2 vote. Don't be misled by that. I don't have a lot of answers about the city hall project, but I do have some questions that you might be able to answer. No minutes were kept for the city hall advisory committee discussions. Why not? For a multimillion-dollar project, shouldn't taxpayers expect that careful records would be kept in the interests of transparency? The notes that do exist—and I did actually check them this afternoon again—do not show any preference by the committee. That isn't quite accurate. Did you know that the majority of the committee favored the proposal that Otto is bringing forward? It wasn't 8 to 2. We never voted. We did a small poll, went around the table, and the majority of people in that room favored the rebuild instead of starting again. The original committee's charge was to present a recommendation to council. At the final committee meeting, we were told that there would be no recommendation, just a report. Who made this change? And why? Why was it made? There was no effort to cause us to resolve our differences of opinion or otherwise agree on a recommendation. Why didn't that occur? Did the council ever receive a report? If there is a report, why didn't the committee see it before it went to council? In fact, why have the committee in the first place? What was the point? Last question. Is this actually how we want to do city business in Eugene? If so, I'd like to know who made that decision? If not, I'd like to know what changes will be made to prevent this from happening again in the future. Thank you.
Ray Wiley is next, followed by Jerry Diethelm.
First, I'd like to thank you, the mayor and the city council, for all the work that you put in with very little remuneration for our city. My name is Ray Wiley, and I moved to Eugene in 1961. In April of '62, then-city manager Hugh McKinley hired me to be Eugene's onsite representative for the construction of the new city hall. Since 1997, I and my fellow Rotarians have been very active in the renovation and maintenance of Skinnerbutte Park on a weekly basis. In 1961, after my degree from Iowa State and working five years for an architect in Des Moines, I saw a very interesting article in Progressive Architecture about an award-winning design for a new city hall in Eugene. The design was so unique that I wanted to visit the site and speak to the architects. So my wife and I drove to Eugene the first week in April 1961. I found a design I considered perfect for the city. The site is near the end of the Oregon Trail and Fort Clatzip in an area of many rivers the Caliponia Indians dominated until about 1850. Eugene was also considered the timber capital of the world. The architects were able to take those five elements and blend them together in a way that was not only functional but very attractive. Our city hall is a brilliant example of mid-century Pacific Northwest architecture. The Eugene City Hall should be near the top of the list of national historic buildings. I would consider it a crime to destroy such a national treasure. Councilors, please give this treasure to our city. Save this treasure for our city. Thank you for your consideration.
Jerry Diethelm is next, followed by Ward Beck.
My name is Jerry Diethelm. I live at 2652 Aggett Street. I've been Eugenian for 44 years now and an architect for 50 and a landscape architect for the same amount of time. And occasionally, I comment on architectural matters in the city. I'm very much in favor of Eugene building a new city hall, but I don't believe you have to waste the present building's combined economic and historic worth in the process to do it. But I want to talk not so much about that. I want to talk about the present proposal we have before us. I don't think Eugenians presently understand or would approve of the total cost commitment of your two-phase headquarters, hindquarters concept if they did. I've talked to a lot of people, and most of them I've talked to are under the mistaken impression that they are getting a new city hall for $15 million. They don't realize that it's just a down payment and will require another $25 million or more, depending on when it gets built. Phase 2 office building connected behind the new building to bring back and house the city services that are now spread out in leased space downtown to support private development. They don't realize that without buying that Phase 2 building, the city hall project ends up kind of all hat and no cattle, all chiefs and no Indians, all honey and no hive, and carries the continued burden of leased space that needs to be allowed, that should be released to become more economically productive. So I think it's time to step back from awarding each other cedar plaques and make sure the community understands the magnitude of the costs and the long-term commitments they're being asked to make. And knocking down things before everyone understands that the true cost of a new city hall is Phase 1 plus Phase 2 is an ill-advised action that can't be reversed. Let's just at least be open and honest here. If we buy the first-phase administrative showcase, if we buy the honey, we're on the hook for the hive. With regard to sustainability as an architect, I'd much prefer to see our community take the lead in demonstrating how to bring important 20th-century governmental buildings into the 21st century. Thank you.
Ward Beck is next, followed by Jaime Vasconcellos.
Mayor and councilors, my name is Ward Beck, and I reside in Councilor Clark's Ward. I am here today to request that the city council cancel the impending demolition of the existing city hall. City manager Reese, Mike Pennwell, were good enough to meet at my request two weeks ago to discuss the costs of rebuilding city hall. Eric Hall, a local architect and another member of Save City Hall group, and I came prepared to discuss actual costs. We had a detailed line-item cost analysis that had been prepared two years ago at city expense by Turner Construction on the cost of rebuilding city hall. The Turner study says that the existing council chamber, 25,000 square feet of finished office space, 120 below-grade parking-level spaces, 40,000 square feet of shelled office space, and 16,000 square feet of storage could be rebuilt for less than $15 million. We confirmed with Turner that their numbers are still accurate and include a 4.5% inflation adjustment for the two-year delay in the start of construction. They stated that this estimate included all the new insulating, utilities, glazing, et cetera, of a new building, as well as making the building earthquake code compliant. John and Mike said the Turner's numbers were just wrong and out of date. We asked for copies of their studies that supported that conclusion. Mike's response was that architecture is a reiterative process, and their experts decided early in the process that rebuild would not work, so they did not pursue the actual costs. We don't argue with the Brokaw estimate of $15 million to demolish and rebuild a new Phase 1 council chamber and executive offices. We don't argue with the $25 million to build Phase 2 sometime in the future. We just do not understand why the city should spend $40 million to get what they could get for $23 million. I was also directly involved in the relocation of the police. The city did an outstanding job of repurposing that building for less than $80 a square foot. That makes the Turner estimate even more credible to me. There is an issue over also, an issue over the $1 million being spent every year for rent for city offices until Phase 2 is built. Let's save the $17 million and not demolish city hall. I leave you with this brochure from the local BRING organization. It says the definition of sustainability is reuse—excuse me—to reduce, then reuse, then rethink. It is time to rethink. Please do not demolish city hall before you rethink city hall. Thank you.
Jaime Vasconcellos is next, followed by Don Bischoff.
I'm Jamie Vasconcellos. Good evening, Your Honor, city councilors, and city manager and staff. I see several friendly faces here. I remember from a previous life when I was director of a social service agency, and Kitty, Your Honor, was on my—mayor was on my board, and Greg Evans also was on my board at that time. Now I live in the ward of Alan Zelenka, and I also was on the community policing agency for the Whittaker at that time with the mayor, so we go back a little bit. I'm greatly relieved early on today that you decided to have a work set— I'm greatly relieved early on today that you decided to have a work session because I think there was so much smoke, more than there was in the valley during the game the other day. I heard four, at least four, councilors were unsure or certain that they had never voted for something as important as demolishing an historic building and agreeing to rebuild at great cost a new. That decision is the greatest decision fiscally that anyone sitting in your chairs is going to make. It's greater than any of the last 50 years and might be for the next 50. To have four people on a council of eight and the mayor unsure of or being told what they decided without any documentation of something that happened over a year and a half ago is astounding when we're talking that kind of money, that momentous a decision. And when that building is torn down, it'll be too late to go back and say, "Well, wait a minute. What did we decide?" The only information we have, this factual objective that you paid for, is the Turner study. Unless there's another one out there we haven't seen, it's all hearsay, as they say in the court of law. It's smoke and mirrors from people that walk through a building and say, "Gee, I think it'll cost this much." They haven't done a study. I'd also beware of a study by somebody who's going to profit from building anything new. That's why we need you to appoint another objective study if you don't like the Turner I hope we're not lip-service liberals and don't believe in having a tradition go forward of looking at things objectively. If things were in haste, once that building is down, you can't revisit it then. Why do we have to commit to a work session where no information's going to be presented? We're just going to have a list of things that were voted on in the past and conjecture that now we have to go forward? We can't look at this anymore? We've done enough? It looks like a mistake is being made, at least in the opinion of a lot of people here. I think we need to look back. As far as a Stafford home, I bought a house. I'm sorry about your experience. I had a great experience rebuilding my Stafford home. It was well-built, and it came right in that budget.
Don Bischoff is next, followed by Ruth Demmler.
Hi, my name is Don Bischoff. I live at 1632 Bradley Drive in Councilor Mike Clark's ward. I come to you tonight more in sorrow than in anger. I believe I have a little more history with City Hall than any of you. I watched it go up and be finished in 1964. I wrote about it, and I observed the swelling community prior to the time in that award-winning building. Eugene was a little more than 50,000 people in those days, but growing fast with a growing appreciation for modern buildings. So we had this new City Hall. It's designed by local architects chosen in regional competition, complete with a unique round city council chambers as its centerpiece, something to be really proud of. But in many years since, I've watched the slow degradation of the City Hall, watched deferred maintenance become planned obsolescence. Early on, the lovely reflecting pool around the city council chambers began leaking. The city tried to fix it, I don't know how hard, and when it couldn't figure out how, it just gave up and drained the pool. 20 years or more ago, someone decided to paint the natural cedar pillars that surround the building an ugly beige color, and then they were just let go until you see the ugly peeling mess that they are today. So it was more than a little ironic to me, as I watched last Wednesday's tragicomic farewell to City Hall ceremony, to see those pillars suddenly become subjects of adoration, complete with Native American rituals, and to learn that they're so valuable that they'll be sliced up and used for paneling in the planned new miniature City Hall. Who knew how sacred those pillars were? Apparently not the city officials who let them become scabrous over the years. Meanwhile, all the city departments that City Hall once held have been spread out in private and public buildings all over town. So even before closure, if you wanted to go down to City Hall and complain to a department about something, you were out of luck. Nobody home. And when EWEB decided to shut off its steam heat, it was, "Oh, well, guess we'll have to shut the old building down now for good." With no apparent sense that in doing so, you're abandoning an important, once-beautiful piece of city history and architecture. We're again about to become known as the city that tears things down. Doesn't have to be that way. We presented and will continue to present figures tonight that show there is a better, cheaper way. We're pleased that you've agreed to take another look at the issue, but it's important that you take a fair look, with a complete look at all of the figures from both sides. This City Hall deserves at least that. Thank you.
Ruth Demmler is next, followed by George Hermak.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I decided there are two items that I really wanted to bring up. First, I'd like to say something about shelter care. Shelter care is closing down this week. Winter is coming. We're having an increase in the number of homeless on the street, and we have so many with mental problems that are in our community. To close down shelter care is really a crime. Somehow, the city and the community as a whole should find some way to stop the closing of shelter cares, all the units they have over on 99. I'm just very concerned about that happening. We also need more housing, of course, for all our people. The second item is, have you all looked at the Weekly? When I looked at the Weekly and saw the illustration of the City Hall would be made into one huge parking lot with a little building on it for the city manager and council, I was just really shocked to have an on-ground parking lot. We don't need any more parking lots in the center of our city. Talk about sustainability. I've never heard of a sustainable city that really had good planning to have a parking lot built. We're past the age of having parking lots in our center cities, long past having parking lots. We have an underground parking lot that could be saved. Instead, we're going to spend a couple million dollars to put it down. Less than a million dollars would be seismic. We've had several estimates now that we could have seismic construction fixed to prop up to make sure that during an earthquake, it would be safe. And yet, we're spending a couple million dollars to fill it in and to grind the city into nothing but gravel to fill up the hole. That's no way, really, in our community to proceed with our City Hall. I do believe that we need a new entrance on 8th that I've seen pictures designed of so that it shows along 8th Street that we see that there's an entrance to our City Hall. But I think what we have today, we could remodel and rebuild. Talk about sustainability. Rebuilding is certainly more important than tearing down. Thank you.
George Hermak is next, followed by Leslie Beck. All right. Thank you. Leslie Beck is next, followed by Marston Morgan.
My name is Leslie Beck, and I live in Mike Clark's ward. I've lived in Eugene since the early 1970s and have been a residential real estate broker for over 34 years. I attended the mayor's presentation of the new City Hall last week. I disagree that only reusing the existing exterior wood and breaking up the rest of the building to use as fill is the best use of taxpayer money, especially when it's going to be used to fill in the existing underground parking area. Why pay to take away existing parking? I was involved in the city's acquisition of the office building on Country Club Road, which was remodeled into a welcoming and useful police station. The city was thoughtful enough to refrain from building a new police station and instead reuse an existing building, resulting in savings for taxpayers. Now that the police no longer reside at City Hall, please do the same and give thoughtful consideration and use the real numbers to evaluate this situation. City Hall no longer needs to be brought up to essential services standards. Don't just be stuck because the new, from-scratch City Hall looks good on paper. I'm sure the architects can come up with an inviting City Hall remodeled from the existing structure that would welcome the people and give them a place to park their car or bike. A remodel could be done in one phase, not two, for the same cost as a much smaller phase-one for a brand-new, from-scratch building. We don't want you to come back and ask for more money to fund something that should not have been started to begin with. Thank you.
Marston Morgan is next, followed by Jonathan Stafford.
Hello, once again. My name is Marston Morgan, and my office is at 241 East Broadway, and I live out on the farm on Mosby Creek near Cottage Grove. And I've been asked by my colleagues to comment on energy conservation issues and the existing City Hall. I have been fortunate in my career to have worked with the best in this field, Parsons Pasadena, Bechtel Corporation, PRC Harris, and others, in the planning and construction of some of the landmark industrial cities of the world, particularly in the Middle East. So I've been around the block. I bring more than 40 years of technical expertise to the table. I want to jump ahead to my conclusions, just in case I get cut off, and they're very simple. We have tremendous disparity in cost based on our technical analysis of various factors relating to energy conservation, seismic, and other things. Tremendous disparities in cost between our technical findings and the technical findings of the city manager and his consultants. I mean, that's a fact of life. It's our duty collectively, yours, mine, the city manager in particular, to sort this out and to do it objectively and to do it impartially. I strongly urge that we get outside analysis and outside audit and take it from top to bottom before you proceed any further with the destruction of this building. Now, let me indulge in some of my pet issues. Energy conservation, I'd like to narrow it down to just a couple of issues which are interesting. One of them is the application of photovoltaics. There's enough roof area on the existing City Hall to support a photovoltaic array that would generate nearly 700,000 watts, sufficient to make the existing building, 700,000 watts, sufficient to make the existing building, as it stands, concrete, block, and all, zero net energy. And even an energy-plus building, so you could sell some energy back to the grid and make a little money off of it. Added to this is the courtyard configuration of the building, which has been overlooked a lot. Given my experience out of the Middle East, this is a classic solution for natural cooling. The configuration of the building is such that it is designed for natural cooling. Wind passing over the top of the courtyard, this is how courtyard buildings work, wind passing over the courtyard creates a venturi effect which draws cool air through the plantings at the perimeter of the building, through the open parking area in this case.
Thank you.
And it works. I'm glad I got your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jonathan Stafford is next, followed by Dennis Cassidy.
Jonathan Stafford, I live at 437 East 11th. At Wednesday's deconstruction celebration, I was struck by the list of virtues that the new City Hall will embody: openness, accessibility, energy efficiency, and interaction with the street, and thinking that, you know, it really doesn't take a lot of imagination or creativity to see how the existing building can also be remodeled to embody these virtues. I understand that many of you are intellectually heavily invested in acquiescing to following the path that this City Hall process is on, but a decent respect for the opinions of the citizens of Eugene requires that you take the time to compare side by side the differing construction estimates in a deliberative manner, so that the decision you make will have some degree of transparency. Now, during the time of the design competition that brought the City Hall, I was a small observer, both in stature and participation, of the process of one of the designs. In those days, once you shrugged off the possibility of the mushroom cloud on the horizon, those times were optimistic. As more people acquired them, automobiles became essentially the only means of transportation, and in a good gas price war, you could get about more than four gallons of gas for an hour's worth of work at minimum wage. It was thought that soon we would be zipping around in flying cars, and when EWEB finished their Big Creek plant, electricity would be too cheap to matter. When the design competition was announced, the firm of Stafford &amp; Moran assembled a full team to take on the design for this new City Hall, which included, of course, the architects, but a structural engineer, mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, landscape architect, and more significantly, a sculptor and a muralist. The entire team contributed to the design from the very first meeting, and the presence of the artists on the team helped clarify the symbolic features of the design, including the separation of the city council, the people's chamber, and the center of the design could be associated
Thank you.
...services surrounding it. Thank you.
Dennis Cassidy is next, followed by Jennifer Hoover.
My name's Dennis Cassidy, post office box 5028 Eugene, mayor, councillor, city manager. I think I'm pretty safe in assuming that none of the councilors or mayor were either born or raised in Eugene, so therefore, it's probably pretty hard for you to understand my passion in trying to save some of Eugene's older buildings. I'm born and raised in Eugene. I grew up across the street from McGaffey's Wedding Chapel and Funeral Home, which is now the home to the Bijou Theater. My grandparents lived a block to the north. In grade school, I took my bicycle to the fire station in the police department located at 11th and Willamette to be stamped and issued a license plate. Across Willamette Street to the east was our public library. That was the first Andrew Carnegie Library in the state of Oregon, built in 1893. Our family later moved to South Eugene. We lived one house away from Ken Moran, one of the architects of the City Hall, and two homes away from the artists that designed the artwork in the City Hall. I've witnessed the destruction and isolation of downtown Eugene. Urban renewal has destroyed countless buildings in our downtown: the Delray Restaurant, Cosmo Tavern, Foose Bar &amp; Grill, and the High Lake Theater. Others that we've lost to fire are the Osborne Hotel downtown and the Francis Willard Grade School at 13th and Olive. The Wrecking Ball claimed the Eugene Masonic Lodge and the beautiful brick Eugene Armory. Fortunately, we still have the MacDonald Theater and Quack &amp; Bush Hardware downtown. We also have the Smead Hotel on Willamette Street, thanks very much to Otto. We still have some beautiful buildings, Vallard Hall and Deedee Hall on campus, MacArthur Court, and St. Mary's Catholic Church downtown. But are our children and grandchildren going to have to travel to Boston or Europe to see examples or experience what older architecture was like? Today's hot topic is sustainability. Tearing down is not sustainability. I bought from Eugene and moved the last surviving home out of Monroe Park in West Eugene in 1984, and four more homes from the University of Oregon just before the Wrecking Ball would have taken them down. Several years ago, I helped move three beautiful homes from the site where Whole Foods is going to be built. That is sustainability. Three weeks ago tomorrow, I helped move the old church built in the 1800s on Irvington Drive to its new home on River Road and Beacon Drive. That is sustainability. Please don't demolish our City Hall. Sharpen your pencils, take a closer look at the numbers, and help everyone to understand the costs associated between phase-one and phase-two. Rehab is much less than new construction. Thank you.
Jennifer Hoover is next, followed by Donald Driscoll.
Jennifer Hoover, I live at Ward 7, and Clara Saretta is my councilwoman, and I'm here to talk about and ask you
Talk right into the mics.
I strongly urge you to, before you put something in motion, take a vote on it. Take pause and look into the situation and how it's going to affect the people that's surrounding the motion, in particular, the rest stop on Railroad Boulevard at North Polk. It affected our lives in such a disruptive way that you could measure it. It interfered with our sleep, our harmony, and no one won. I learned that today via email, that Nightingale has withdrawn its, what, application? But there's no resolution, and I would like for the city manager to let me know what his decision was and what it was based on, so we could know where we stand legally if it comes up the next time, God forbid. And I'm missing some points, but that's my main thing. Please think about things before you affect the lives of people, and get back to me and the other people on what the result was based on the city manager's decision. Thank you.
Donald Driscoll is next, followed by Tom Brant.
Mayor Percy, members of the city council. My name is Donald B. Driscoll. I'm an architect and a community planner. I'm here with a really sad tale, essentially. Do we realize we're tearing down our city hall? Does anybody somehow grasp that as anything that's of any significance at all? This is a city hall that's been here for fifty years, and we're tearing it down indiscriminately. Just take it out, do something else with it. It makes no sense whatsoever. It makes no sense in any way, shape, or form. The other thing is, we've never been given the ability to do an evaluation of a rehabilitated city hall as opposed to a new city hall. That has never occurred. You haven't seen that. We're just, all of a sudden, all we're talking about today is demolition, demolition. The other thing is, the city itself turned the city hall into a derelict building. They abandoned it two years ago and let it sit there and decay, rot, whatever you want to call it. But the point is, it was abandoned. The city hall was abandoned. The point is, then, is there, what was the reason for that? Why would you abandon a city hall, go out and spend $1.2 million a year for extra space out in the city of Eugene to take care of the space that you vacated in the city hall? Why would you do that? There's only one reason. There's a fascination or a fixation on a new city hall. There's no evaluation between the two. We can give you a number of evaluations that would tell you that the existing city hall could be done cheaper, with more square footage. The new city hall is less than a third of the square footage of your existing city hall. The trouble is, none of this makes any sense. Why, why would you do that? The other thing is, they talk about, well, seismic. You know, this building is seismic, derelict, you know? There's a problem out there, there's a little shake out there. I've got a wall outside of my building that's 110 years old that has never fallen down in any sort of earthquake, but beyond that, beyond that, you can do the earthquake correction for less money, less money, than it would cost
Thank you.
...to tear the city hall down.
Thank you.
Anyway, I thank you for your time, but think about it, just a little bit.
Tom Brant is the last one up.
Well, if I wasn't convinced before, I am now. I'm Tom Brant, 37056 Boiler Creek Road, out in Markola, Springfield address. I'm interested in what happens in Eugene and surrounding areas, always have. 1970, I saw a need, 1969, I saw a need, and so I helped start the Saturday Market, and they voted me the first executive director of the Saturday Market Corporation. And a lot of people didn't want it. They said, "Oh, it's going to take away from our business and everything." And we told them, "No, no, no, this'll bring people to Eugene." Well, they found out, it did, and it's grown, it's spread. A few other things that interested in, I saw a need one day, might have started out at the dump out in West 11th when you were throwing away the old downtown and burying it. I salvaged a few nice things out there. Of course, I had to keep running and moving to keep away from the employees, but couldn't be able to do that. And eventually, created a job in the county, and I was a solar guy, the compost guy, and then had to make a showing, so I created a recycling project. It was called the Materials Recovery Demonstration Project out of Glenwood. And that was the first time anybody had ever really gone through and found the facts on recycling. The county didn't want it. They fought me the whole way. I just went around the solid waste and went right to the commissioners and got what I wanted. But we, that was when, and the county, when we got through and we had all the facts and figures, the county still didn't want it. They wanted to burn the garbage at the UVO. And that turned out to be a white elephant, the county called it. But anyway, the recycling, you know, that was the start of recycling here in Eugene, the real start with the facts and figures. I was around when the old place was torn down, and it's all buried out on West 11th and Belt Line. I spoke against it. The people that pay their fair share of taxes, and there are some that don't, would love to have a better house. Most taxpayers in Eugene would even like a remodeled house. But they can't afford it. They can't afford a new house, and most can't afford to remodel. Why should the city think any different?
Let's close the public forum, and before I turn to council to see if there's any comments, I just want to clarify one thing that, I know it was just a sort of misuse of words in the, because I know what it meant by it, but I didn't want to let it go, that shelter care is closed, is closing because it's not closing. They're closing their, a very important facility on Highway 99, the Royal Avenue Site, which is a big loss to the community, but they, Shelter Care is still there and has other facilities on 99 as well. So I wanted to say that, and then I want to be sure to clarify that there is no camp or rest stop, camping program or rest stop plan for railroad, as of now. And the only other thing I want to do is clarify, because I've heard a lot of comments made tonight, that in addition to council, mayor, and city manager, and city manager staff in the city hall, there's also the legal staff, the city recorder, the sustainability staff, and communications staff, and they are all part of what's currently there. Looking to other people for any comments anybody wants to make? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. You actually addressed a couple of things I was going to raise about. Shelter Care is not closing, but the Royal Avenue facility has. The Human Services Commission, which Shelter Care gets some of their funding through HSC, is going to meet, has our regular meeting on Monday, and Steve Vanilla with HSC has said he'll give us the HSC board briefing on that. I don't know if we'll have the means to reopen that particular facility, but it's certainly of concern to the Human Services Commission. And then, in terms of the question about the car camping site, I understand that residents are trying to seek some certainty about what might happen there. Our understanding is, the Nightingale folks have withdrawn their request, have no intentions of creating a camp on that site. Whether or not the property owner himself decides to apply for something in the future, we can't control that. It's private property, and the property owner could seek to do something there. It's doubtful that he would on his own, but I don't know if the city manager wants to offer any more information about that, but I, you know, do have a plan to meet with Ms. Hoover soon, and we can talk more about that.
Betty?
I mean, councillor.
Thank you. I just want to thank all the experts who came and talked to us about city hall. I hope that we pay attention. I feel, as Lee Donbichoff, more in sorrow than in anger, in a way. I certainly don't want us to be known as the people who destroyed another part of our history, and I hope that we will reconsider and that we'll take seriously all the things that were said tonight. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the next, thank you, everybody, and move on to the next item. That's our consent calendar. Council President.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we pull item E, please?
Yes.
B or D?
E.
No. Which one?
He said E.
Which one?
E.
Is an echo?
He's an echo.
All right, so we're pulling E, and we've moved and seconded the rest of the consent calendar. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, it passes. Item E, councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question, item E. This is
Can we hold on until the noise quiets down, please? I can't quite hear.
Okay.
Would everybody who's having conversations, please take it outside? Please? Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, I just have a question. This is about the resolution amending the MPT exemption for the Pearl. I don't have any objection to this, but I just had one simple question. I'm just looking at the resolution itself, and paragraph B, it says, "It has been brought to the city's attention that there's a discrepancy," da-da-da-da-da. Who, just out of curiosity, who spotted the discrepancy? And how does that come about? I mean
Lane County Tax and Assessment? Lane County Tax and Assessment?
Ah-ha, the Tax Assessor's Office, ah-ha. Okay, so they must have, I wonder if they looked at the original, you know, council motion approving it, and looked at the drawings and the specs, and then compared that with some other document?
They looked at the approval resolution and then did a site inspection.
Ah-ha, ah-ha, okay, thank you. That's all, it was just kind of a curiosity thing.
I think we're ready to vote on that. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. And none in opposition, it passes. So, we're on to the next item, which is the committee reports, and of course, we've been on break for a month, and I guess my only, I'll just run through a few things that have happened during the break. Senators Wyden and Merkley had a meeting in our police station on oil transportation through our community. We had an economic forum. LTD won a national award for the transit system. We had the Mayor's Art Show, the Plane Art Show, Regional Solutions Executive Committee, which I serve on. Welcome back to Bethel, teachers. The Poverty and Homeless Board met, the first meeting. The Executive Board of RAIN met, oh, and I had an editorial meeting with our own RG editorial board on RAIN and on City Hall. We had a city hall event, which you're all very familiar with, Mayor's Art Award with NECA. The wonderful thing that happened in the library last week, in case some of you didn't catch that, is that with the help of the Library Foundation, they are now able to offer every child in Eugene one free book sent to their house a month from the age they're born till they're five years old. And so that is a huge, huge thing, and we really want to encourage people to sign up for that and get those books and get that library for their kids. So you all need to use where you are to get that message out to your neighborhood associations and other places. Encourage families to take advantage of this, it's a tremendous opportunity. That's all I got, it was a busy month, in spite of the fact that it was not supposed to be a busy month. Go ahead.
So I can give a quick report on the Police Commission. Yes, we had a break in August, and right before that break, one of our commissioners resigned from the commission before his term was over, so we are, we do have a vacancy on the Police Commission, and we are soliciting applications for that. And folks who are interested can find that material on the city's website under the Police Commission tab. And then, the Police Commission is starting a conversation around emerging technologies and, to some extent, connecting that with constitutional privacy issues, but, so emerging technologies can be around license plate readers, drones, neither of those things the city has right now, but the Police Commission is, I think, trying to be proactive and engage in that conversation before we actually have the technology in front of us and are grappling with how we want to use it in our community. So I encourage folks who are interested in those topics to stay informed.
Councillor Pauling?
Thursday, the Lane Metro Partnership will be having probably its last meeting. I won't go into too much detail about it, because I don't want to take Danny Burrows' thunder away from the Wednesday work session. There is also an article in the blue chip section of today's paper about the work that's been going on as far as the big look is concerned. So either read the article or wait until Wednesday's presentation by Danny, which will actually be before the meeting is going to be on Thursday, before any action will be taken, any votes, but he'll be able to better explain what the new regional economic development will look like. And also, the EMX Steering Committee for Lane Transit District, we met on the 13th of August, and there's been kind of a change as far as the involvement of the Steering Committee, and kind of gotten away from its basic charges. So we've kind of gotten back together and come up with, you know, this is where we need to go, and we made some recommendations as far as some, how to reengage the new charges, and it's been sent to the board for their review. And also, we kind of gave a brief presentation to each member as to who we represent, you know, who are the people we have contact with in the community, and it comes down to that we have a very diverse group of cross-section of interests and connections within the community. And then they gave a brief update on the West Eugene EMX extension lawsuit that was finally settled. And I made one comment at the meeting, and I don't know if it was taken the wrong way or the right way, hopefully it was the right way, but what I said is, as a member of the Steering Committee, I wanted to thank the Omot people for keeping this issue on the front burner. You know, it's maybe not the right way to do it, but at least it caused a very intensive dialogue, and I think it actually made LTD look at how we process things in a different light, and hopefully, going forward with the next sections of the EMX, that we will follow a process that kind of developed out of this long, arduous, and sometimes very painful process that we went through on the West Eugene EMX. So, you know, I thank the Omot people for doing that, and like I said, I don't know how it was taken, but that was, I guess that was it on the EMX Steering Committee.
Councillor Lincoln?
Yeah, I also wanted to acknowledge LTD and congratulate them for being voted the best mid-sized transit district in the country. I think that's a huge accomplishment for them, and well deserved.
What's the thing more ceremonial than
Right, we are going to have them here, the ceremony. Report on the MPC, you have, we talked about scenario planning, that's coming back to you on Wednesday, actually. I'll be I'll be on the phone on Wednesday, but one thing to take away from the scenario planning is that the options that meet the targets and meet the goals actually lower people's costs, reduce travel time, reduce congestion, improve air quality, improve health, and lower healthcare costs, reduce greenhouse gases, and meet the target. All of that in one package, which is pretty amazing, actually, when you come to think about it. We also talked about quiet zones a little bit, that's coming back as a work session as well. I'll let the mayor talk about a rail update, we talked about that a little bit. And then we had a MTIP amendment to account for, that's Metropolitan Funding Source, account for the federal dollars, $24 million for the MX project, that's the first slug of money that's coming into the project, so we had to approve that for it to be able to be spent. And then finally, I wanted to chat a little bit about this document, which is called ARTOP. It's about the Regional Transportation Options Plan, and it really is about options to regular automobile traffic, and, or just single occupancy vehicles, and talks about traveler information coordination tools, Smart Trips, school-based transportation options, rideshare, transportation options, and mobility hubs. All of those are kind of explained a little bit in here on the VAC page. But I wanted, on the front, there's a handwritten note about some national trends that were, that we've seen for the millennials, the 16-year-olds to 34-year-olds, and compared to previous generation, and their choices about how they get around, how they use transportation. They used, they traveled 23% less miles in a car, while they increased, they do 40% more transportation in transit, 24% more on bike, and 16% more by walking. So they've got a really different shift about how they, what their mobility choices and patterns are. Less about cars, more about transit and biking and everything. And that needs to be reflected in moving forward, that group of people is moving into the mainstream of our society as well. So interesting trend that millennials aren't like us. I do that. I do that.
Council Clark.
That leads to some interesting questions. I'm going to pass for today, though, or I won't bring up those questions just now, but...
Council Brown.
My committees didn't meet this last month, so I have nothing to report.
Council Taylor.
Thank you. Some things people have been asking me about, has our police department been accepting military equipment, as many have?
Yeah. You know, I'll have to have he get back in touch with you and give you a little bit more detail on that.
Okay, that's, I've, people have told me they're concerned about that. And people, another thing which we have nothing to do with, but people have been complaining about having to take their recycled bottles someplace other than the grocery store, and a number of people have called me about that. It's not, it's not our decision, whether it's right or wrong, it's not our decision. Workforce partnerships and the process of reorganizing by the governor's orders to, instead of actually doing a lot of the work they've done, they, we will be farming it out, and the county will be taking over a lot of that, temporarily at least, it's by It's the picnic season for our neighborhood organizations. Crest Neighbors, well, not Crest Drive, Crest Neighbors had a very successful picnic with more than 100 people, I think, there, and the Southeast Neighbors are having their picnic next Sunday. And I think that's a good thing, that gets neighbors to knowing each other. One thing that has come up with both of those neighborhoods is they're disappointed that they don't have as much money for newsletters as they did have. Thank you.
Council Evan.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First, the Human Rights Commission completed our retreat back in August, and we have a plan for this next fiscal year that we're going to be presenting to council, I believe it's in October, with emphasis on both addressing homeless issues as well as racial discrimination within the city. Second thing is, is being the former member of the Board of Lane Transit District, as well as being former vice president of the Board, ad president of the Board, is with a lot of pride that I have in seeing that our transit agency has been selected as the Agency of the Year in 2014 for American Transportation Association, APTA, and that, you know, this award is not just national, it's international. It is for systems across North America, so we're looking at Canada as well as the United States and that. And it is a testament that's long overdue because of the things that LTD has done over the years, being in 1984, the first transit agency to have a fully lift-equipped route system in place. That was in advance for people who had, you know, mobility issues way before even the 1991, I'm losing my memory on this, but before we, you know, had federal legislation to deal with mobility issues in this country. And, you know, we were ahead of the curve then, we were ahead of the curve in bus rapid transit. We were the first one to open a BRT line in 2007 in the United States, whereas we've had countries in South America who had done this well before what we'd done. And I just want to give kudos to an incredibly professional organization, agency, not only I served on the Board, but at one time was an employee of, so hats off to LTD.
Council Pryor.
Thanks. Just quickly, the Housing Policy Board met today, and probably the key element from the meeting was that Housing and Urban Development HUD is changing significantly a lot of the rules for the provision of funding for housing projects. And so the staff is figuring out exactly what the implications are for not only new projects that we might have, but some of the existing projects that are in the pipeline, and we may be seeing some of those come back as the conditions change. So Housing Policy Board is going to be spending some time thinking about what our processes are as a reflection of what the new home funding is, and there's been some changes in CDBG as well, not only at the federal level, but then there is also a lot of changes taking place at the state level in terms of the administration of a lot of those funds and how they filter down. So we're figuring out how to do things with less money, different rules, and different requirements, and so they'll be, that'll have an impact on us, in particular, around what the policy should be.
City Manager.
Nothing, ma'am.
All right, then. Thank you, everybody, for your work tonight.